Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for, it's still March, 27th, 2018. Before we begin our business, I'd like to invite up Pastor Matt Sharp of Evanston Avenue Baptist Church to lead us in prayer, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pastor? Good evening. Let's pray. Father in heaven, as we thank you for the gift of this day, we recognize it as an opportunity to be stewards of your people. Father, we recognize that first and foremost, before they are our people, they are your people, made in your image and precious in your sight. So, Father, as we set forth this evening to be the stewards of your people, we pray again and ask for wisdom, we ask for courage, we ask for patience, and we ask for the strength to do what is right in all things. Father, we commend to you our leaders, and we ask that you continue to watch over them, lead them and guide them by the power of your Holy Spirit. And, Father, as you are present here among us, give to each of us the encouragement that we stand in need of. We pray this in Jesus' name, and all God's people say, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. May we have the roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Warren? Absent. Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Orin-Simisaviga?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galvin?
Here.
Next item, introductions, introductions, presentations, a review of the final Imagine Muskegon Lake Plan with our consultants. And are you leading out on this mic? Obviously, you're coming forward.
Yeah. I think we're having some technical difficulties, but I think they'll be able to work through it. So, just a bit of background on this plan. It kind of came about just because of public interest. By the time staff had already heard the project, there was already significant interest by stakeholders and property owners and the general public about how we're going to address our changing waterfront. With the major properties changing, with B.C. Cobb and the Kirksey and Vaughn McCary properties, along with Harbor 31 and Sappy, we felt it was a proper time to start addressing the different landscape that's going to be our new waterfront. And those were the four initial target areas, but as we talked to more and more people and more property owners about their plans for the waterfront, we know that there's going to be much more changing than just these four properties. So, it essentially has taken the whole width of the lakeshore and has covered a very significant portion of our property. And the plan is just filled with great ideas that we can try to implement, so much so that this initially wasn't even going to be a part of our master plan. But staff thinks that since it's such a large portion of our city and so many great ideas, we can go through this after tonight, and staff will be going ahead and recommending that we adopt this as part of our master plan. Our general master plan was done in 1997, so it's getting to be a little dated. But staff, over the years, has worked on updating sections of it, and some of those sections are still relevant. We have the 2008 Lakeshore and Downtown Redevelopment Plan, which a lot of great ideas have come out of, and we're still using to this day. We have the Downtown Parking Plan, and we are also going, staff is going to be working on what's called a Livable Communities Plan here. We'll probably have some public input sessions, probably within the next month, month and a half scheduled. So, really, the only outdated portion we would have left are maybe some corridor plans and focusing on the individual neighborhoods. So, we think that's the proper way to update our master plan and sections, rather than just going for a total redo, since we still have so much relevant information out there. So, tonight, we're just going to be going over what the consultants came up with. Like I said, this plan was very heavily input by the community. We held two stakeholder meetings, which involved the property owners of the properties that are undergoing significant change or plan to within the next several years on the waterfront. We also had two separate stakeholder, or community input meetings. Our main one was on October 30th. We had over 150 attendees, and staff held up a make-up date for those that couldn't make that as well. We also had the final draft out for review for three weeks, and staff met with anybody who wanted to sit down one-on-one with any questions or concerns. So, we had several people take us up on that as well, and the consultants were able to make those changes that we saw fit, and that's what they're presenting on tonight. We're not actually asking for any type of approval or anything tonight. This is just the consultants' wrap-up of the plan, and from there, staff will take it along the master plan adoption process.
Very good.
All right. Is that working? So, I'd like to introduce Linay Wells from Williams &amp; Works and Mark Miller from Naderfeld.
Evening, folks, and welcome.
Thank you, thank you. So, I will just let you share those around.
Thank you.
Well, I will walk you through the analog version for now until we get the digital up and running. So, as Mike mentioned, my name is Linay Wells. I'm an urban planner and a principal with Williams &amp; Works over in Grand Rapids. We also worked on the Form-Based Code Project and also that Lakeshore and Redevelopment Plan that Mike mentioned earlier. We're happy to be here, which is a culmination of several months of community engagement and urban design and planning around the Muskegon Lake waterfront area. So, our main focus was to connect the waterfront to the city, the city to the waterfront, and also the northern part of the water to the southern part. So, all the way from Veterans Memorial Park down to Pier Marquette Park. So, we were working in this kind of north-south-east-west framework, all about connectivity. And you'll see how that is, we string that throughout the plan. So, the plan is organized in seven chapters. We have an introduction section that I'm going to go through that talks about all of the community engagement and the goals and objectives and the major guiding principles that are the foundation of the design concepts that you see for six different sub-areas within the waterfront area. The plan also builds upon a lot of the previous work that has already been done. So, on this page about our guiding principles, what we did is we took an overview and looked at every one of the current plans that you have in the City of Muskegon, and we culled from that all of the relevant goals, objectives, policy, guidance that informs how we wanted to approach the waterfront with the community and with you as leadership. And so, what we were able to do is come up with four key themes. So, those themes are color-coded, and you'll see those repeated throughout the design plans. So, any implementation step that helps achieve one of these objectives under these four themes are color-coded for easy navigation within the plan. So, the first one is about sustain and sustainability, and that really speaks to natural feature protection, building a connected network of green space. The second is about advance, and that's all about economic development and supporting future growth, acknowledging we have great industry on the waterfront and the need and desire to protect that, to celebrate it, to use it, to continue to reap the benefits of sound development and industry within the city. So, that's the page I'm on. The next one is connect. So, connect is what I started off with. How do we bring the downtown to the waterfront, the waterfront to the downtown, and then connect that north and south part of the waterfront? So, they're wonderful, there's great direction in terms of how to make those connections. And you'll see in the design plans, a lot of interest in crosswalks and how we make a more pedestrian-friendly environment, especially along that waterfront. And then convening is all about programming and different uses of the waterfront areas, about fishing and beaches and docks and kayaking and all those wonderful activities that we like to do in that waterfront area. So, when we had our public meeting, we asked residents to help us determine where are the best places to do those things, those four themes, where they should be placed. And so, you'll see on these maps how there's clusters and concentrations of ideas about how we improve sustainability, where we need to make improvements for connection, where economic development should continue to be a big focus, especially at the north. So, you see that red dot is a little bit bigger. The idea of convening, especially near Heritage Landing, that was a big priority for residents. And then some of the comments that they made, and you'll see the tally, because we were able to determine where we had more alignment in terms of priorities. So, that key at the bottom, over 50% of the public who participated wanted to see improvements made with the connections, so those crosswalks that we talked about. Convening was also important, ideas about trailheads and connecting trails all the way out to Hoffmaster someday, outdoor music venue, just having swimming and kayaking and art and different amenities down at the waterfront. So, this is a map where we took all of those dots and all of that input, and we put it all together. So, each of these kind of nodes, these larger nodes, are one of the sub-areas of our plan. Sorry. So, these are the six areas, and you'll see how the concepts relate back to that. So, the idea of maintaining a deep-water port, different development opportunities along the waterfront, especially near those properties that Mike mentioned earlier. And then even the whole idea of connecting the State Park over to Pier Marquette Park, and how do we make that connection? Maybe it's a water taxi or some other type of technique. And then we created this synthesis map that shows all of those opportunities. And as you look at this, you see the Lakeshore Trail is that main connector that knits the waterfront from Veterans Memorial to Pier Marquette. And then we're making some recommendations in terms of bike facilities that connect back into the neighborhoods, as well as crosswalks and, you know, playing off of those development opportunities with, you know, the new convention center, and how do we knit that into this waterfront space? We also looked at your existing conditions and came up with some current metrics. So, we want to know what you have today, so that as recommendations are made and implementation takes place, we're able to track those metrics and achieve them, achieve the goals that we've set out for. So, we know that we have 140 acres of publicly accessible land along the waterfront. So, in our future, it's to maintain publicly accessible land along the waterfront. So, we set that metric as it is today. Publicly accessible shoreline, same thing. We have 4.6 miles, and we want to continue to achieve those 4.6 miles of accessible shoreline. Multi-use trails and pathways, we have 8.4 miles of multi-use pathway, and our future goal, we set for 10 miles. So, we don't have a set timeframe for when to achieve that, but we just know that if we aren't setting those goals and if we aren't measuring what matters, it will be hard to achieve that moving forward. So, I urge you to spend some time looking at some of these metrics and thinking about how you align your future expenditures and your capital improvements plan with some of these priorities in the document. We also talk about opportunities for more boat slips, especially transient boat slips, the idea that people might come to the City of Muskegon and the waterfront for the day. So, we want to find safe ways and easily accessible ways for them to dock up, walk into downtown, have dinner, and come back to their boat and head home. So, we're looking at current boat slips, you know, the opportunity for new slips, transient docks. Today, we have 160 feet at Harbor 31. In the future, we'd like to see 480 feet of transient dock space. Fish cleaning stations, that came out quite a bit at the public meeting, looking to add two additional fish cleaning stations. Beaches, we also talk about watercraft launches and the idea that especially at Richards Park, the need to add another kayak slip at that part of the waterfront, because there's limited amenities to the north. We have a lot of amenities concentrated along the central part of the waterfront, but we want to make sure that the neighborhoods, especially that Jackson Hill neighborhood, has access to some of these beach and park facilities. In terms of downtown intersections, we want to improve those. We want to have 10 improved intersections so that people can cross in all four directions, so they don't have to make that C-shaped crossing when they're on third or fourth. And then waterfront development, so just making sure that we're continuing to encourage business and the strong economy when it comes to the shipping industry on that waterfront. All right, Mark is going to talk about those sub-areas, and then we'll talk about those implementation steps.
Hi. I'm Mark Miller with Naderfeld. And so, what you've just heard is what we think of as a lot of the framework and the introduction to the plan. So, all of that stuff is talking about what we can measure, what we heard from people, how we took that information and sort of brought it into a plan. The rest of the plan begins to try to cast a vision based upon some of that stuff. So, these last five sections or these chapters, six chapters, are really about these six districts that are along the lakeshore. If you put all the districts together, they represent the entire lakeshore. But they all have very different characteristics. The first one, we're starting at the far end by the State Park. That's what we call the Channel District in this plan. And so, this is an enlargement of that earlier plan that you saw that was sort of a synthesis of all of this information. And from there, then we can begin to think about the plan. What the plan does is it has this high-level view, and then it begins to focus down into more detailed views within some of these districts. And so, the important thing is that when you drill down into this, you can begin to see or visualize what that could be. So, you're going to see a lot of illustratives in the plan that begin to paint that picture of that future vision. It's key to remember that those are illustrative, is one possible way that the vision could be created, but there's a myriad of other ways that that could also be done. So, these are ways to begin to help people visualize where the plan is going. So, when we talk about like a kayak launch, for instance, we show where that actually is. You know, we show how that water can be connected to the land, how the city fabric can be connected to the water, and even equally important, how people can get from the water to the city fabric. So, there's a lot of dialogue going back and forth. So, in this particular instance, in the Channel District, we elected to zoom into what you guys refer to as the ovals. And so, there's some possibilities there that exist in terms of low-impact kind of development potential, pop-ups, like what you're seeing on Western right now in terms of retail incubation. There's also potential for some residential applications there. So, there's a lot of, this just sort of begins to illustrate some of those potentials for that within the Channel District. Moving on, we're going to go east down the lakeshore. So, this is the next district down. It's what we refer to as the Bluffton District after that neighborhood. This one has, it's starting to peek into the former Sappy plant. We don't get into that area in our plan, because that's being done separate from this project, but we're cognizant of what's going on there. So, I think I hit this too many. One more time. Still having some technical difficulties there. Or their operator. Okay. Fat fingers. So, this area, it just begins to show how we're connecting some of the non-motorized infrastructure along the lakeshore. It's showing some potential development opportunities. But these areas are not as intensive as the areas we start to move towards downtown. So, as we start to move into those districts, you'll see a lot more intensity happening. This is really more about connection and potential opportunities, although we do drill into, in a few of these plans, some intersections. So, what you'll see here is that little asterisk there that says modified intersection. That's at beach and shoreline. So, in most of these sections, these chapters, we also show some of these intersection improvements. In that particular case, that one just shows a, did I, how is this thing jumping around?
Yes, ma'am. So, we have people online, they're asking if you could talk into the microphone.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, yeah. If I can just control the technology. Am I doing this?
Do you know what?
It just keeps jumping forward. Okay, so this is the Beach Street and Lakeshore Drive. So, again, we show sort of what that can happen. We also, whenever we can, show images of what that could look like. So, you'll see that the plan has, we really worked hard at not having a lot of words in the plan, because the graphics really helped convey what that vision is without people having to read whole pages of text. The next section is the Lakeside District, and that's where we're starting to get closer to downtown. Again, you can see the edge of the Sappy, the former Sappy site, and then even some, basically what we're looking at here is what we're referring to as the old tank farm. So, that's the redevelopment opportunity here, along with all of the connective tissue that's happening with the bike path and the non-motorized path. So, that's sort of our illustrative drawing of what that tank farm could be. It's showing some residential development, it's showing marina. We talk about those things in the plan. And then we show images of what that stuff could look like, and this is pretty consistent throughout the plan. The next section is the Western waterfront, and now we're really getting into more of the downtown area. There's a great deal of property here that can be redeveloped along the waterfront, a lot of farmer-industrial property that is underutilized at this point in time. There's also some opportunities to make sure that we begin to fully connect that non-motorized trail to the waterfront even more rigorously than it is now. So, what you'll see here is sort of that zoomed in of that Western waterfront district, and then we get into the illustratives. And these illustratives actually show very rigorous development in terms of how much could go there. We're really promoting in some of these spaces here, residential. So, what you see here is mostly residential, because your opportunities for retail are probably limited in these locations. You also want to focus retail downtown when you can. So, there could be some retail, but this is going to be primarily residential. In the cases that we're showing, we're showing a little bit higher-density residential along the edges. But we're also making sure that we have a pretty robust trail system and sort of public space along that edge where those two things can sort of coexist and still allow that accessibility and connectivity to the water. So, this is one of them. This is the Kirksey property. Kohl's is just down right here. Watermark is here. The marina's here. This is the beginning of Heritage Landing. So, you can begin to see in these illustratives where we're showing cruise ship docks where they aren't. We're showing transient boat slips, and we're showing how that trail actually connects through all of this, because it's important that that does that. And then this is the one right up the coast. This is the mart dock. So, again, same kind of thing. We're showing how it connects to downtown. Each one of these blue circles are one of those intersection repairs, and those do show up in the plan as well. We're not highlighting them in this presentation. The next one is Central Waterfront. So, that's really the one that's adjacent to downtown. And again, we go into great lengths here in terms of the detail of how that's being sort of redeveloped. So, you can also see the mart dock in this one, because these do overlap. And then this is Terrace Point over here. So, there's a lot of development. Here, we have some more connections. And again, these are just illustratives that begin to try to convey some of the principles of the plan that Linay talked about. We try to paint pictures for people so that they begin to understand these and get behind them. And then the last one is the Port Innovation District. And again, this gets away from downtown a little bit, so there's less sort of development potential. This is the Consumers Plant area as well. But we do show some potential for Richards Park here, where you could make some improvements to that in terms of access to water, connectivity with the trail system. So, that's an opportunity where we could infiltrate, we already have green space, and it's just enhancing that a little bit. So, that's really the six sub-areas in the plan, about 10 minutes worth of explanation. And then the last few slides are implementation strategies. So, we weave in implementation strategies at the end of each chapter relative to each one of these districts, so that you can begin to check off things as we're moving towards some of this vision, the things that the city can do to help implement that vision.
I can quickly go through the implementation steps. So, back in the Channel District, as Mark mentioned, one of your goals, and I know we've heard it from staff, is to adopt that Critical Dune overlay. So, that's one of the priorities of the sustain theme. We also talk about utilizing the space, the context, because there's various heights, and the dune itself has some topography, so we could probably increase building heights in some areas. So, under the advance, it's maybe looking at a way to have an overlay district to help facilitate some new forms of development. For connecting, we talk a lot about wayfinding and increasing the pavement markings and the trail system, so we can even look at that Lighthouse, Harbertown Beach and the parks as some of those trailheads, so you could start your trip along the lakeshore path all the way across the city. And then for convening, we look at Harbertown Beach and the opportunities there to really maximize the potential, looking at kayak launches and other improvements to the beach space as an alternative to the Lake Michigan side of that peninsula. On the Bluffton District, similar to the Channel District, we have the same Critical Dune overlay as a priority for sustain. For advance, we want to make sure that we're also looking at that overlay ordinance for residential development. For connecting, we want to make sure that Lakeshore Drive, the multi-use trail, is off of Lakeshore Drive, so we're actually taking it from the current segment that's on-street, off-street at Windward Point. And then convening, it's making improvements to the Cottage Grove Boat Launch, so that the launch can maybe even be home to future bike-share facility and other amenities, especially even one of those fish cleaning stations. For Lakeside, our main priority in Lakeside, and something that's on your agenda, is the street space. So, traffic calming and a new streetscape that will help with those connections from the neighborhood to the waterfront area. In terms of convening, we're looking at how to really maximize the potential of that former tank farm, and maybe looking at acquiring some of those properties near that tank farm and where Lakeshore Drive and intersect. So, we've listed even some of the addresses of properties nearby that we might want to think strategically about how those could be opportunities for access to that future tank farm. For advancing, it's all about helping that business district thrive, and some of that streetscape improvement helps achieve that. For Western waterfront, under sustain, we're looking at the opportunities to daylight, Bedler Creek? Bedler Creek? Bedler Creek? Thank you, I had it right the first time. And advancing is really just supporting all of the development that Mark had talked about and how we take advantage of the location assets with the views and the access to the water. For connecting, we have identified, as I mentioned before, those crosswalks, so we have access on all four directions, and even looking at pedestrian refuge islands. Because we know that's a long span for someone to cross during one traffic signal, so they need opportunities to take that break and wait for that signal to turn. So, at 5th, well, 3rd, 5th, 7th, 9th, and the Dog Park, and even Division, those are the priority streets where we really need to focus on providing a safer way for people to cross the street. And then with convening- have access on all four directions, and even looking at pedestrian refuge islands. Because we know that's a long span for someone to cross during one traffic signal, so they need opportunities to take that break and wait for that signal to turn. So at Fifth, well, Third, Fifth, Seventh, Ninth, and the Dog Park, and even Division, those are the priority streets where we really need to focus on providing a safer way for people to cross the street. And then with convening, at Heritage Landing, we want to increase the number of transient docks by 20% at Hart Shore Marina, and then have support facilities for the kayak and boating public, like maybe lockers or other amenities. Central Waterfront, the priority there is really the Jackson Hill neighborhood, as I mentioned, but looking at Smith Rierson Park and Green Acres Park, is some of those green connections, and how do we take those green connections and parks and cross the Parkway, Moses J. Jones Parkway? How do we cross and get to Richards Park and that waterfront? Advancing, we're looking at supporting Mart Dock with their, any potential future redevelopment plans, but also the Harbor 31 and the transient boat slips that we have there, and providing that seamless connection so people can dock and then walk to the downtown. Connections, we really want to improve Marquette. And with convening, we're looking at all those improvements to Richards Park. And then finally, the Port Innovation. We want to continue to work together on the Habitat Restoration Goals that Whymster Dick has, and they're working on that at Richards Park, but also at the Veterans Memorial Park. For advancing, we want to do a feasibility study to support all of the shipping and freight activity, and looking at how to do a tax increment financing district, maybe for the waterfront, the waterfront district provisions and the state statutes, to find ways to use TIF to support some of those shipping facilities. For connecting, we want to have a seamless connection from that trail, that bike trail, the non-motorized trail into the Veterans Memorial Park. Right now, you cannot get to the park on your bike, so we want to make sure that we improve that connection so visitors have a way to access that wonderful facility. And then in terms of convening, we want to make sure that the Veterans Memorial Park itself can be treated maybe like one of those trailheads. So maybe there's signage, maybe there's a bike repair station, wayfinding, any sort of amenity for the biking public or the walking public who might want to start their journey at that end. So those are all of the implementation steps that speak to those design plans that are a direct result of the public input and existing conditions that we mapped out. So everything flows together, and you're able to track along with your progress as you're making decisions about where to allocate your resources and doing your annual budgets, and maybe things you can look back on in this plan and start to prioritize and find opportunities like the one that LeAnn is going to talk about for Lakeside area and your great spaces and great amenities. Are there any questions?
Questions here for our presenters?
Well, that's a comment for me. Thank you for your professionalism and your vision to put together a plan like this. I oversee the Jackson Hill area as one of the commissioners, and that's always been one of my concerns. And you mentioned that area, which definitely leaves a facelift, but it has so much potential to connect the neighborhood with, you know, that park space and to tie it in with downtown. That's something that I've always, you know, been advocating for, and I think, you know, putting together something like this would kind of be a gateway to get something started, so.
Yeah, there are so many great resources. You mentioned those park spaces, and the waterfront is so close to them, yet, you know, visually with the topography, you just don't know how close it is. And if we could find those green connections and make it a little bit more intuitive and safe for people to cross the 31 bypass, that would be ideal.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I think Richards Park, too, is so close to Jackson Hill, and there's a boat launch there that really could use some upgrades. And right now, the bike trail does not have a connection into Richards Park, so we need to discover or work with the railroad to find that connection so we can have more opportunities there.
Yep, I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's really exciting how it's just not speaking to, but there's real potentials or real plans on how do you draw an entire neighborhood, you know, Marquette, Angel, Jackson Hill, utilizing currently underutilized green spaces like the old Green Acres Park, Smith Rierson Park. That's a magnificent area through the creek beds, you know, leading down to, you know, the harbor front. But, you know, it's that same focus in each one of these areas, you know, that natural and designed connection of each one of the neighborhoods, you know, to the harbor front and, you know, ultimately out to, you know, the mouth of the channel.
Yeah, McGrath Park is the other one, too, that we looked at as one of those connectors.
Right. So it's a... I'm very excited for, you know, what I see and, you know, the potential for, you know, great planning and direction to, you know, tie all of our citizens, you know, to our water.
That's exactly it, because we do have the focus of our citizenry. The people who live and work every day in Muskegon need to have these great amenities. And if they're... If they serve the residents, they will also serve those who come here on the weekends or just during the summer. But that base has to be to support the people who live here and work here, right?
Absolutely. Anything else? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, with regard to Shoreline Drive and U.S. Business 31, those have been significant impediments between our waterfront and our downtown area and our neighborhoods, basically concrete asphalt barriers. And we may do during festivals and whatnot, try to cross it and go to events, but it's not exactly the safest, and it just is this psychological barrier for many of residents and integrating our waterfront with surrounding areas. So I see that you've included, you know, improved crosswalks and demarcation of access points, and I do like the idea of adding for downtown, at least First and Fifth Street, for additional access points. But I'm just wondering, how do you envision overcoming those barriers? Is it through traffic calming throughout Shoreline Drive? I mean, because we can paint crosswalks, but that's not necessarily going to resolve it still being a barrier. So how do we lessen that barrier? Did you consider any kind of pedestrian overpass for downtown in the Shoreline area or along Shoreline Drive? Was just deemed to be cost prohibitive, so let's not include it? Or like, what are some of the ideas that you have for overcoming that barrier to better integrate our waterfront with our downtown and surrounding neighborhoods?
So we looked at this plan as... It's not one of those 25-year visions. We really wanted to focus on some immediate essential needs first before, I think, something long-term like a big pedestrian bridge or overpass. So to improve connections, we also wanted to improve crosswalks throughout that corridor so we weren't funneling or requiring people to go to one spot to cross. The more that we can knit it together, kind of like one of those tapestries with lots of fingers, and that connecting that grid back together was the goal here. So that was our focus, is what we could do in the next three to five years to make a profound impact. And then I think there's plenty of opportunities to think long-term about some of those other techniques, but it's a psychological barrier, it's a physical barrier, too. And the more that we see people down there crossing the street, that will help slow traffic because the cars start to anticipate that, oh, this is a people space, it's not just for vehicles. So through that, also through the development plan and the placement of those buildings helps to narrow that perceived width of the street, which then helps calm the traffic. We do show more street trees, hoping that that can help as well.
Okay.
Anything to add?
I don't... Linay did a pretty good job of talking about that. I appreciate the fact that you mentioned that it's a perceptual barrier as well as a physical barrier. I think oftentimes it's probably even... It's a physical, certainly a physical thing that's there, but the fact that when you're standing on one side of it and you can see the city from that other side, but it seems like you're 100 miles away, you know? It's like so far away. And I think that the bridge idea, we heard, we heard people talking about that, even when we were working on the form-based code portion of that project about five years ago, same thing came up, you know? And I think in one of our parking studies, we actually showed that. I think the realities of the situation are that it's very... That is a very costly endeavor and one that may or may not have good impact on your city. You've already got this, like, very... So it's autocentric, it's a very heavy insertion into the fabric, it's a gash, but it's not a huge gash. It's not an elevated highway, it's not a depressed highway, that's a chasm, it's at-grade. So when we think about fixing these things in our cities, and it's happening all across the country, where people are trying to remove highways or mitigate highways in their downtowns, there are multiple ways to do that. The most aggressive one is to say, get rid of it. So, you know, just remove it and let the grid absorb everything that needs to be absorbed. The other one is, another one is to simply make it into an at-grade boulevard. So if you have an elevated highway, you tear it down and you build an at-grade boulevard. We sort of have the makings of that right now. So we think that without spending tons of money upfront, you can begin to reconnect the fabric across that boulevard like we're showing. I mean, it's just crosswalks potentially to start with, it might be some enhanced signalization, it might be making it a little bit more comfortable for somebody to cross there, putting pedestrian refuge islands in the middle. Those are all like huge steps, but, and they're small steps, they're at the same time. So they're big, they take a lot of effort, potentially some money, but, you know, they're only part of the way there. And so, but they're the increment. So you have to think about this in an incremental fashion, and instead of trying to find this big silver bullet solution for it, do something incrementally. Do something now instead of waiting for the silver bullet that might come in 20 years and not be able to do anything, just be handcuffed by that. So do that, you know, do these kind of little increments, and then maybe what happens is try to focus building construction at these intersections so when you're walking along that fabric, the building wall stays consistent. Plant some trees. Trees make an incredible difference, and they're cheap. You know, they're cheaper than anything else we're talking about. Maintain those trees, let them grow, build the canopy. Those things allow for the pedestrian shield along the street, they provide air quality, they provide protection from the sun and the elements. So there's a lot of great things that those things, the trees, do, and they can make huge differences to this at a very small cost, relatively speaking. So I think that those are some of the things that you would do. And then over time, after those things are done, then you start thinking about the actual throughway, you know, like what can happen with that? Because all of these things that we're going to do are not necessarily going to drastically change the speeds overnight. And so one of the things that has to also happen is those speeds have to change and go down so that the thing behaves in an urban manner rather than in a very autocentric freeway manner. So I think that that's, thinking about it in those terms, building what you can build now, building at the increment, making little changes to this that gradually lead to bigger changes over time will be a more productive and fruitful method to do it.
Excellent. Thanks for all those ideas.
Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? At this juncture? Okay. Mike, any wrap-up on this?
We're just excited to start working on this, so, like I said, we'll start taking this to the planning commission to put it in the master plan, and we'll come back to City Commission to send out the plan to the adjoining municipalities, and then we'll have about a two-month review period to get the master plan.
Very good. I want to thank staff, our contracted service for their hard work, and of course, all the citizens that engaged planning and our consultants, you know, through this process, because it's your visions, your ideas that are such a major part of this work. And hopefully we'll, you know, see much fruitful redesign and development come out of, you know, this marvelous design plan.
Thank you. And I believe the whole plan will be on the website, if it isn't already, right?
Yes, it's on the website now. If anybody can go on, it's on the main, on the main site, so we'll have that up for review throughout the duration. I'd also like to thank the MEDC for providing us with the $20,000 grant as being part of their Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. Also, the Community Foundation for Muskegon County gave us a $10,000 grant, and Mr. Max McKee also chipped in with a grant of $1,000 donation as well for this plan. So we'd like to thank all of them for helping make this possible.
Very good. It's great to have such wonderful partners.
Yes.
Is the plan that's online, is that updated?
That's the updated plan. Yep, everything's all updated.
Online now?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Very good. Thank you, folks. It's great to see you again.
May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request to approve minutes of the March 12, 2018 work session meeting and the March 13, 2018 regular meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Special event liquor license, Coles anniversary party, City Clerk, summary request. The Muskegon City Clerk's Office has partnered with Coles Bakery to hold a community party on May 26, 2018, celebrating their 75th anniversary this year, and is seeking City Commission approval to apply for a license for beer and wine sales. Staff recommendation to approve the request. Special event liquor license, Taste of Muskegon, City Clerk, summary request. The Muskegon City Clerk's Office is spearheading the Taste of Muskegon on Friday, June 15, and Saturday, June 16 this year, and is seeking City Commission approval to apply for a license for beer, wine, and spirit sales during the two-day event. Staff recommendation to approve the request. Fireworks display permit for Heritage Landing, City Clerk, summary request. Night Magic is requesting approval of a fireworks display permit for July 4, 2018 at Heritage Landing. The fire marshal will inspect the fireworks on the day of the event. Staff recommendation, approval contingent on inspection of the fireworks and approval of insurance. Fireworks display permit for Muskegon Country Club, City Clerk, summary request. Melrose Pyrotechnics Incorporated is requesting approval of fireworks display permit for July 3, 2018 at the Muskegon Country Club, 2801 Lake Shore Drive. The fire marshal will inspect the fireworks on the day of the event. Staff recommendation, approval contingent on inspection of the fireworks and approval of insurance. 123 Net Unilateral Metro Act Committee Engineering, summary request. Approve the request for a permit from 123 Net and authorize the mayor to sign the permit. Staff recommendation, approve the permit and sign the documents. Aggregates, Highway Maintenance Materials, and Concrete, Department of Public Works, summary request. To approve the request for several different aggregates and materials from several different bidders, staff recommendation, recommend approval of bids outlined in the summary request. Lake Shore Drive Preliminary and Construction Engineering Department of Public Works, summary request. Authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Prine and Newhoff for preliminary and construction engineering services related to the reconstruction and streetscaping of Lake Shore Drive from McCracken to Laketon. A request for proposals was advertised on February 16, 2018 with evaluation criteria as follows: understanding of the project and challenges, method of approach to the project, applicable experience, time and effort, and accessibility of the firm to city staff. Our intent is to select a consultant based on qualifications and negotiate the cost for work. Six proposals were received and reviewed independently by an engineering staff member and the director. Both reviewers selected Prine and Newhoff as a top-ranked firm. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Prine and Newhoff for engineering services related to the reconstruction and streetscaping of Lake Shore Drive from McCracken to Laketon.
Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Mr. Johnson?
G and H, please.
Are there any others? Commissioner?
Seeing none, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented, minus items G and H. Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Rensom Sabega, supported by the Vice Mayor, to accept the consent agenda as presented, minus items G and H. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensom Sabega?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item G, Commissioner Johnson?
I move to recommend the approval of, I move to approve the bids as outlined in summary request for aggregates, highway maintenance materials, and concrete.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the bids as outlined in the summary request for...
the bids as outlined in the summary request for aggregates, highway maintenance materials and concrete. Commissioner Johnson?
Just one question, um, for, um, staff on this. Uh, just came to me a, a few minutes ago, I was just wondering, um, have we explored, um, participating in some kind of consortium with other municipalities in Muskegon County that we can, um, basically leverage our buying power, um, to get some of these aggregates, the cost of these aggregates lower? Is that a possibility? I know we, we are part of other consortiums for buying, and I just wondered if we've ever done that in this area or have explored it?
Um, I don't know if we've done that in the past since I wasn't here. Um, and so that's an excellent question, and I can certainly look into that. I, I don't know the answer to that question right now.
Okay. Yeah, and that makes perfect sense since you're relatively new in your role as the Director of Municipal Services. Uh, but yeah, I was just thinking, I was like, huh. You know, I'm sure there are many other municipalities in the area that are buying the same kinds of materials, and let's see if we can collaborate and intern some kind of purchasing consortium to
Sure.
lower costs for everybody.
Yep, we can certainly look into that. It, it may be that staff's already done that, I just, I'm not aware of it.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
Sure.
Because by tuna muss stuff ain't cheap. Very good. Any other questions regarding this? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rinsam-Savigna?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item H, Commissioner Johnson?
I move to authorize staff to enter an agreement with, uh, Prine and Newhoff for engineering services related to the reconstruction and streetscaping of Lake Shore Drive from McCracken to Laketon.
Support? It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Rinsam-Savigna, to authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Prine and Newhoff for engineering services related to the reconstruction and streetscaping of Lake Shore Drive from McCracken to Laketon. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, so, um, I was just speaking with residents recently, um, in the NIMs neighborhood, and they were wondering, um, if this is gonna include connecting our sidewalks. So the sidewalk ends at Lake Shore Drive and Laketon, um, on the waterfront side.
Mm-hmm.
So if this is as part of the streetscaping, if we're gonna add in sidewalks, we've got a continuous sidewalk, um, on both sides of that street. And they'd also wanted to know if the guardrails are gonna be replaced, um, right there, um, on the, where Lake Shore Drive is curving into Laketon.
Right. We do plan to connect that sidewalk.
Awesome.
Yeah, I, I agree completely. Um, the guardrail, I have not looked at it to see the condition if it needs to be replaced. We will certainly do that through the, um, engineering process. I did have a resident ask me some time ago if it would be removed, uh, or if it could be replaced with something more decorative, which it cannot.
Okay.
Because it serves a safety purpose, so we will have to have guardrail.
Could the guardrail be painted?
I don't see why not. The only, uh, concern that I have is that when it does get hit, because once in a while a panel gets hit and you have to replace it, then we have to paint that one.
Yeah.
And make sure it matches with the sun fading and whatnot, so.
Okay.
That would be the only detriment that I could think of, but.
And we have had cars go through that and down the hill.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for the Director? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsam-Savigna?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, please.
Concurrent with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice and Order to Demolish the Following Public Safety. 425 Octavia Street, 6009 Mulder Street, 955 Turner Avenue, 1317 Seventh Street, 1768 Wood Street, 1814 Dyson, 1699 Pine Street. Summary request, this is to request that the city commission concur with the findings of the Housing Board of Appeals that the structures are unsafe, substandard, a public nuisance, and that they be demolished within 30 days. It is further requested that administration be directed to obtain bids for the demolition of the structures, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized and directed to execute a contract for demolition with the lowest responsible bidder, or staff may issue infraction tickets to the owner, agent, or responsible party if they do not demolish the structure. Staff recommendation to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on 425 Octavia Street? 6009 Mulder Street? 955 Turner Avenue? 1317 Seventh Street? 1768 Wood Street? 1814 Dyson? 1699 Pine Street? Entertain a motion to remove these properties from the landscape. Commissioner German?
Okay, I move to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish. 425 Octavia Street, 609 Mulder Street, uh, 955 Turner Avenue, 1317 Seventh Street, 1768 Wood Street, 1814 Dyson, and 1699 Pine.
Support? It's been moved by Commissioner German, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish, demolish the properties as outlined. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsam-Savigna?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. You are free to go now, Mr. Paulson. Item B, please.
Request to amend the planned unit development at 1161 West Southern Avenue. Planning Economic Development, summary request. Request to amend the PUD at 1161 West Southern Avenue to demo the former gymnasium and to expand the parking lot by Avisher Properties LLC. The project also includes moving the playground at the corner of Davis and Southern to south of the building next to the new urban farm to be located onsite. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of the PUD amendment with the condition that all future parking expansions be approved by staff with up to 93 spaces allowed onsite. Committee recommendation, the planning commission approved a motion to amend the PUD with the condition that all future parking expansions be approved by staff with up to 93 spaces allowed onsite. The motion was approved eight to zero with one member absent.
Thank you. Be in a motion, Commissioner Johnson?
I move to approve the planned unit development amendment with the condition that all future parking expansions be approved by staff with up to 93 spaces allowed onsite.
Second? It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the PUD amendment with the condition that all future parking expansions be approved by staff with up to 93 spaces allowed onsite at 1161 West Southern Avenue. Hello again, Mike.
Hello. So this is a pretty minor request, but, uh, we recently approved this last year, and it's such a historic type of building that I just wanted everyone to be aware of the request of demoing it and adding the extra parking, which would be coming in phases, uh, allowing staff to approve that along the way. Also wanted to keep you aware of the park that will be moved onto the private property, and Avisher, uh, will be buying back those two lots from us on the corner, so we don't have to maintain them. Uh, and also make you aware of the, uh, urban farm that will be going on in the back of the building.
Very good. And the Jimmy is historic, so that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
I played there.
It's very historic.
Well, make sure to move his retired member.
That mid, that mid-century modern. Sorry, Counselor. Very good. Any questions for Mike? We'll just put up a plaque there that Attorney Schreier played here.
There we go.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsam-Savigna?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, please.
Request to amend the planned unit development at 1670 East Sherman Boulevard. Planning Economic Development, summary request. Request to amend the planned unit development at 1670 East Sherman Boulevard to utilize the building as a medical office that provides urgent care, occupational medicine, and radiology by Mercy Health Partners. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of the PUD with the condition that a stop sign and bar be installed at the end of the Panera Bread drive-through. Committee recommendation, the planning commission approved a motion to amend the PUD as proposed with the condition that a stop sign and bar be installed at the end of the Panera Drive, Panera Bread drive-through. The motion was approved eight to zero with one member absent.
We have a quick question for you. Okay, very good. Can I have a motion on item C, please? Uh, Vice Mayor?
I move the planning commission approve the motion to amend the PUD as proposed with the condition that a stop sign and bar be installed at the end of Panera Bread drive.
Support? Been moved by the Vice Mayor, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to approve the PUD with the condition that a stop sign and bar be installed at the end of the Panera Bread drive-through, uh, at 1670 East Sherman Boulevard.
All right, so this, uh, PUD has an underlying zoning of industrial. Uh, the, the PUD allows for retail, uh, this is skewing from that a little bit, so that's why it needs to be amended. We're asking that these medical uses be allowed just at this address, at the facility, so we can keep the, um, the rest of it as retail. Um, this building has sat vacant for many years, uh, it was the former Old Country Buffet, and, uh, for a short time it was a Chinese buffet. Um, so we think this addition can kinda help, uh, the retail, some of the strip malls across the country have been struggling, and we think this is a good way to, uh, bring more people to the area, and that can help out, um, with some of the new retail that will be going in. Uh, one thing that we did notice out onsite is, uh, there's a little bit of a traffic concern, uh, with the customers exiting the Panera Bread drive-through. Um, that would only become, uh, more dangerous with the, the reuse of this building. Uh, so we suggested that, um, we approve it contingent upon staff reviewing, uh, coming up with a better plan. Uh, the applicants have been great to work with, this handout I just passed out is, uh, what they have proposed to add. Um, they're actually proposing two stop signs, uh, we were only asking for one, but it's probably a good idea to add that second one. Uh, and the stop bar is just the white line you see on the pavement, uh, at the stop sign. So staff is comfortable with this, um, so we would just be asking for approval, um, with this as the, the solution for the, the Panera Bread.
Okay. Questions for Mike?
So who would install the, who's, they're, it's representing Mercy, right?
Yes.
But the building, so I'm just wondering who's actually gonna make the improvement?
So, um, they're, both parcels, uh, the, the Home, or not the Home Depot, the, the Big Lots
Yeah.
and the Old Country Buffet and the Panera Bread, those are all owned by the same development firm, RCG Ventures out of Atlanta.
Okay.
Uh, and since this is a PUD and it's all related, uh, it would be upon them to fix that.
Okay. Yeah, very good.
Just, just curious, do we have to know, is Mercy relocating their urgent care from their, the Oak Campus, the General, Farmer General Hospital?
No, this is gonna be, this is gonna be a new location for them.
It's gonna be
Yes.
another urgent care.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that true? No, it's not true, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can come on up here and speak.
I'm pretty sure they're closing that one.
That's what I figured.
Moving it down to Apple somewhere.
Oh, see, Commissioners, my name is Mike Weeces, uh, 1078 Bear Lake Road, Vice President of Business Health Solutions for Mercy Health. It will be a relocation of the Oak Meddy Center to this location, and moving the current workplace health center, occupational medicine clinic, from the Hackley Professional Building and coexist in this building as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, how are your plans moving along for redevelopment of the Oak Campus? And are you guys working with our planning department on, on exploring that right now?
I would have to defer to city staff, I don't, I'm not a part of that discussion.
They're working with Jonathan Wilson.
Okay.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Weeces?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you again, Mike. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsam-Savigna?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, please.
Rezoning several properties, planning economic development, summary request. Staff initiated request to rezone 1814 Dyson Street, 1824 Dyson Street, 1831 Dyson Street, and 1828 Jarman Street from B2 Convenience and Comparison District, Business District to R2 Medium Density Single Family Residential District. Also to rezone 1813 Dyson Street from R1 Low Density Single Family Residential District to R2 Medium Density Residential District. Also to rezone 1808 McIlweth Street, 1814 McIlweth Street, and 1825 Jarman Street from B4 General Business District to R2 Medium Density Single Family Residential District. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of the rezonings. Committee recommendation, the planning commission voted eight to zero in favor of recommending approval of the rezonings.
I would entertain a motion then to approve the rezonings as outlined. Commissioner?
I move, uh, we approve the rezonings as presented by the city clerk.
Support? It's been moved by Commissioner Rinsam-Savigna, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to approve the rezonings as read by the city clerk. Any discussion?
Just a question there. Alan, can you tell me the purpose of why they wanna rezone all of these properties?
Yes, so, um, this is the reason I didn't put it on consent, it's a fairly, uh, simple request, but when you see this many rezonings, you may think something's going on. Uh, so the county owns 1814 Dyson, and that was just read as, uh, one of the demolitions. And, uh, in order for them to use their grant funding, they need it to have to be zoned residential, and it is a residential home, it just happens to be zoned business. So I told them I'd look into it, and when I did, I came across about six or seven other properties that seem improperly zoned as well. Uh, and those can really cause a problem. All these are, um, single-family residential homes, they just happen to be zoned for business, and that can be an issue, uh, when people try to sell their homes, or to refinance it, or to rebuild after a disaster. Um, those can all be issues when they're improperly zoned, so, uh, you know, it may make sense someday if a developer wants to propose a development on these properties fronting Laketon, but I think, um, it'll help everybody out, uh, in, in the meantime, to have them properly zoned as residences, because that's what they are. So we sent the notice letters to everybody in the area, and specifically the property owners themselves, and they all had questions about what we were doing, and after explaining it to them, they were all in favor of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsam-Savigna?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item E, please.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsamassipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item E, please.
Amendment to the zoning ordinance wireless communication services facilities planning and economic development. Summer request: Staff initiated request to amend Section 2321 of the zoning ordinance to expand the overlay district to allow wireless communication service facilities at 1800 Peck Street, Marshfield, and 2375 Beach Street water filtration plant. Staff has prepared two options for the water filtration plant location and is requesting that the commission select one of them. Staff recommendation: To approve the zoning ordinance amendment with option one for the water filtration plant location. Committee recommendation: The Planning Commission tabled the request at their December 14, 2017 meeting over concerns about the water filtration plant location. At their March 15, 2018 meeting, they approved a motion eight to zero to recommend approval of the request to expand the overlay district with option one for the water filtration plant site.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I motion to approve the zoning ordinance amendment with option one for the water filtration plant location.
Support.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to approve the zoning ordinance amendment with option one for the water filtration plant location. Any questions for staff? Commissioner German?
Yeah, okay, now, when you're talking about this overlay, they're talking about actually putting a wireless tower in that location?
So what we're doing here is to amend the ordinance to allow somebody to apply to do that. So right now, we only, our overlay district only allows four different locations throughout the city to have one of these towers. So you can only apply for it in one of the four locations, which already have the towers there. This would open it up, so two more locations would be allowed to present a plan. So if this is approved tonight, there's no tower that's going to be going in. That would have to come back to the Planning Commission for an actual presentation on what that pole would look like. So this is just opening it up to the possibility. And we started this out in December, and it's just an ordinance amendment, so we usually don't require public notifications, but we've thought since, you know, it could be a contested issue, we decided to send out mailers to everybody in the areas anyways. We didn't hear anything back from McGrath Park, and, you know, we worked with the neighborhood organizations as well. Everybody was okay with that one. The option at the water filtration plant, a few people thought that it was a little too intrusive and that it was going to take away their views. So they simply said we would be in support of it if you moved it 200 feet to the south. So that's where you see option number two, and that's what we were going to recommend. But when we went back out there, we noticed that option one actually has two antennas about 125 feet tall there anyway. So we'd actually be able to relocate those antennas onto the pole, so we'd be swapping out two structures for one. So we thought maybe that would be beneficial to put it there. Also, option two is on a critical dune, so we would have to work around that. And it's also in a charter park, so we would need to work around those leasing issues as well. Option one would be a lot cleaner for the city to put up a tower there, and we believe it would be less intrusive because swapping out the two structures for the one. The two properties just behind option one are both in favor of that. And as you can see from the notes and the minutes from the meeting, there were a lot of comments, people talking through the issue, but we really only had one couple, the DeYung's at the top of the hill there, who were not in favor of either one.
And one more question, Mike. Now, we do have one in the area of 1800 Peck Street, right? Is there a tower in that area? Or was that one of the options? By Marshfield?
That's, well, that's the Marshfield. So there's, the overlay district, we're saying Marshfield, just that one location. And then for the water filtration plant, we're asking you to choose one of the two.
Okay.
So the one at Marshfield is out in the outfield, about left center field, and nobody's had an issue with that one yet.
Now, from a, I guess, a health perspective, where you have these signals and radiation, I don't know much about this, but I've heard, you know, people talk about this, and some experts talk about the level of radiation transmitting from these towers. Have we did any research or had any reports or issues or complaints?
I, none of the complaints were about any type of radiation or anything.
I mean, do you know much about that? I mean, does it cause radiation, or, you know? I mean, this is all me, too.
Yeah, I'm not much of an expert on that. I know there are studies out there, but there's pro-studies and con-studies.
Right.
I don't know exactly which one to believe, but I know that they're placed pretty much, if they're not going to be placed here, they're around somebody else's home. So the ones that we have, we tried to shield as much as possible, but, and they're still in the general radius of neighborhoods.
Yeah, so, just wanted to know, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsamassipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item F, please.
Purchase of property for industrial park expansion planning economic development. Summer request: The city of Muskegon is in need of industrial development but lacks readily available land to meet the needs of today's industrial end-users. Muskegon has been working very hard to attract new industrial end-users to our community. However, because we are an older landlocked city, we lack in cohesive developmental land beyond two to three acre sites. City staff has finalized terms to purchase approximately 22.7 acres of land adjacent to the Port City Industrial Park and are requesting authorization to purchase the land for economic development purposes, expansion of the industrial park. Staff recommendation: Authorize staff to execute an agreement for 2420 Remembrance Drive consisting of approximately 22 acres.
Commissioner Johnson?
I move to authorize staff to execute purchase agreement for 2420 Remembrance Drive consisting of approximately 22 acres.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by the Vice Mayor. Authorize staff to execute purchase agreement for 2420 Remembrance Drive consisting of approximately 22 acres. Questions for?
What's the area of the purchase price, and then we in turn would sell it to the new business that comes in, lease it, or how does that work?
Exactly. It's, well, the price per acre is $15,000 an acre. It comes to about three, just over $340,000, so $340,500. So, yeah, the goal would be that we'll attract an end-user, and then we'll sell the land to them as part of a development agreement.
We'll sell the property to the new user.
Yes.
Commissioner?
Do we have an idea yet what the approximate cost for infrastructure additions is going to be in that area to accommodate the industrial end-user?
We're working on that still. We do know that water is already available at the site. We know that there's a road that probably needs a little bit of improvement, Remembrance Road, it's really functions kind of more like a driveway to the cemetery now, and there is no sewer on the site. So we're not anticipating it to be an extremely large amount, mostly because the water's already there, but we're still trying to put those numbers together.
Okay. And as you forward?
And I should point out, we probably won't make those improvements until we have a, until we have a signed...
Sale agreement?
Yes, exactly. Yeah, it'll probably be part of that, part of that development process.
As well as a brownfield plan for it?
Yes, the assumption is there will be a brownfield plan.
Okay. I would just encourage, as part of the brownfield plan, that rather than us fronting the costs to be reimbursed from the brownfield, if at all possible, let's get the end-user to front those costs and let them be reimbursed by the brownfield rather than us, as we've done with other brownfields recently. That's been pretty much our policy, is we're not going to put the costs upfront or cover the costs upfront and be reimbursed, but we'll let the end-user do it. So I would just like to stick with that policy.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rinsamassipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there any other business commissioners?
Just a request.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just like a request for, and a report for our next meeting, a report from our water filtration plant. Looking at the news, you see in a lot of coverage when they talk, they talk about contamination with water. So if we could get some type of report from our water department just to let the city and our constituents know, you know, that our water is safe and the levels are, you know, what's going on, I would feel pretty comfortable, and I'm quite sure they would too.
You're good. Anything else, commissioners?
We did just get a good report back.
Yeah.
The lead-in copper levels in our water, which had decreased pretty significantly.
We do want to mention that we are going to have an open house at the water filtration plant in May.
Oh, no.
That will actually give a presentation, and people will be able to come through, and there will be some information coming out on that, and our new director set that up.
Fabulous. Public input time. At this point, members of the public are welcome to come forward and chat with us. Each individual is given three minutes to, well, chat with us. We may not always have an immediate answer if you have questions, but we'd certainly encourage you to stay behind so I can put you together with somebody smarter than me in order to get your questions answered. I do have one individual, it looks a bit familiar, Dave Alexander, that has requested all of three minutes, even though you represent an organization.
Two, three minutes.
Okay.
Two, three, two, three.
I want to address you with two hats.
What am I going to do with that?
No, nevermind. Dave Alexander, Executive Director Downtown Muskegon, now 380 West Western. I'd like to address the Imagine Muskegon Lake Plan, first off with the first hat as the downtown manager. First off, I'd like to also mention Ryan Kilpatrick from the MEDC, who, because of our community's redevelopment-ready community status, brought us the planning funds to put this together. An outstanding product, I think, was presented tonight by Williamson Works in Niederveld, and you had some great leadership from your planning department, both from Mike Franck and Jamie Pesch. From a downtown perspective, there's three things I would want to put on the top of the priority list as we go forward. Number one are those intersection improvements that, back to the Imagine Muskegon Plan 2003, connectivity of our downtown to our waterfront was always a key element of that because of Shoreline Drive being a barrier. We moved that barrier from Webster and Muskegon, disconnecting our downtowns from some of our urban neighborhoods, but we moved it to the waterfront, and that shoreline edge in our downtown has now been separated by that traffic. But I think the, especially the first street improvements over Shoreline Drive as a connectivity is a real critical element, as is the Ninth Street over Shoreline Drive at the end of Western. Second, if I was to give three priorities, would be, the second one would be transient shopper docks in the downtown, something we've discussed for decades. And now, more than ever, we have some elements to bring boaters off of Lake Michigan, off of Muskegon Lake, and that shopper's dock should also include, for transients, the kayak, very critical with kale outdoors being downtown, and their corporate headquarters at the Terrace Point Building. So transient docks would be the second. The third would be a pier or observation tower, and I like the one that was discussed in the Kirksey property on that end of the Western Waterfront District. Great views of the State Park, the Channel area, Harbor Town Beach, and the sunsets that would come from that viewpoint. With Muskegon Lake Vision 2020 and now the Imagine Muskegon Lake Plan, I would say that our new downtown, the city central business district, is going to be the south shore of Muskegon Lake from the traditional downtown to Windward Point, and I think this takes us a large step towards that. May I change hats, Mr. Mayor?
You may.
Dave Alexander, I live at 3410 Whiskey Hollow, and as a West End resident, I have three priorities that I like out of the districts that represent my Beechwood Bluffton neighborhood. Number one, I love the traffic circle at Lake Shore and Beach. We tried putting a light in there once, I think, that didn't work very well. But the stop sign doesn't work very well either. As you know, the backup at sunset time in the summer, going from the curve down to that intersection can be pretty tremendous at the peak times. Secondly, I love the idea of exploring the ovals for temporary cottages and chalets on the extension of what would be Indiana. I know that not all of our neighbors down there agree with that, Mr. Commissioner, but I think that's one that is an area that this community needs to get some revenues and help us with the cost of keeping up Pier Marquette Park for the entire community, if not the entire region. And thirdly, I like the idea of a study of a non-mortarized channel link, and I think that should be something that we, as a community, should explore. We used to have a pontoon boat that went across there, not very successful. I was taken out of commission probably back in the 90s. But if you take a look at the Sagatuck Ferry that goes between Sagatuck and Douglas across the Kalamazoo River, and then also the Ironton Ferry that is in Charlevois going down to Point South, I think those chained ferries are very unique. I don't think we need to put vehicles on them, but something for pedestrian and bicyclists, I think, is very much needed to connect Pier Marquette Park to Muskegon State Park. Those are my thoughts, and I thank you for supporting and putting forward the Imagine Muskegon Lake Plan. It's going to take us a long way in this community in the years to come.
Thank you for your endeavors, sir. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Oh!
I didn't fill out a form, though.
Oh, no, no, come on up. No form needed. Just need your name and your address.
My name is Sean Perry, and I live at 2310 Minor Avenue. I'm a new citizen to Muskegon. I moved here in June from Grand Rapids. And I moved here because I like the idea of being close to the water. I like the idea that I was getting a house for the, a comparable house that I had in Grand Rapids for a much lower price, and I like the things that you are doing to rebuild this city. I am worried about the fact that you want to eliminate or downsize our fire department. Living in the Lake Shore area, we're far from Muskegon Heights. My elderly in-laws live on Beach Street. They need an ambulance that will be at their house rapidly, not 10, 15, 20 minutes late because they're coming down Sherman with all of its traffic. We have a fire department that, just a couple weeks ago, we had a fire down the street from us on Minor, and they were there very rapidly and saved that man that was inside his home. Now, if they were coming all the way from Muskegon Heights, would he be here today? I don't know that, and neither do you. I think he would have been consumed by smoke and died.
If I may.
Yes.
What, whatever direction we go in, and whatever plan, the three firehouses will be maintained.
Okay, because we're being told that our firehouse will be closed.
No, no, the firehouses will be maintained, it'll be a full complement, and we would be responding, as we are now, with a full complement of firefighters.
Okay.
So, no, we, it's not a reduction in moving a fire field. It's, whatever model eventually is selected, we'd be filling up our facilities and utilizing our equipment.
Right, because I would worry that you would have trouble attracting businesses if we don't have a fire department.
No, I've had some.
And my health insurance, my homeowner's insurance would definitely go off.
Oh, definitely. I've had, I've had one other call asking the same thing, and...
Because that, because that is what's being told in our neighborhood.
Right, no, it's that, that, no, there wouldn't be way to, you know, to serve the cities.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And welcome home.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission? If not, I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session two, discuss collective bargaining.
Who moved it, move it?
It's still moved? Yeah, okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsamassipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.